Good evening. My name is Tom Holland. I'm the Hudson School District Board President. Welcome to the annual meeting, September 11th, 2012. We appreciate your attendance. Today, as many of you, I think, know, is Patriot Day. It's a day in honor of 2011, 2001, September 11th. A day in which we're remembering those that lost their lives in that tragic, that tragic happening. And so, we decided to begin this evening's event by inviting our schoolchildren, elementary schoolchildren first, that will be giving, be giving our lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an eighth grade choir led by Carol Dolly from our school district here in Hudson. So, I'm going to invite our, our elementary school students to come up, and we're going to ask them if they would like to give us their name and what grade they're in prior to the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll join you, join you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay? And we'll follow that with, with the choir singing. Star Spangled Banner joining them.
Jenna, fifth grade. Olivia, fifth grade. Cheyenne, fifth grade. Colin, fifth grade. Ted, fifth grade. Lily, fifth grade. Aiden, fifth grade. Alexis, fifth grade. Mackenzie, fifth grade. Noel, fifth grade. Emma, fifth grade. Tia, fourth grade. Logan, fifth grade.
(Singing) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end to its resolve.
Good evening again, and I will begin the, the meeting again tonight with introductions of our board. As I'd mentioned before, my name is Tom Holland, President of the Board. With us also tonight is Lynn Robson, Vice President, Mike, Mark Kajerszat, Clerk, Dan Turnahoy, the Treasurer, could not be here present tonight, Brian Bell, Member, Sandy Gurkey, Member, Pat German, Member, Superintendent Mary Bowen Eggbrodt, Financial Services Director, Tim Erickson, and Parliamentarian Mick Walzberger, District Attorney. We'll turn it over to Mick now.
Good evening. My name is Mick Walzberger, and it is my honor and privilege to have an opportunity to serve as your Parliamentarian here this evening. Before we begin, I would like to review the basic parliamentary procedures or ground rules that will apply for this annual meeting of the electors of the school board, or excuse me, of the school district of Hudson. The procedures are intended to promote an orderly and free-flowing meeting. Each of you who is a citizen of the United States is eighteen years of age or older and has resided in the school district of Hudson for ten or more days before this annual meeting is an elector. Each elector has the right to make comments and ask questions at the appropriate place on the agenda. Comments must relate to an agenda item. You are encouraged to submit other comments in writing to the superintendent or to make them during the public comment session at a regularly scheduled meeting of the school board. I want to reiterate that comments must be made at the appropriate place on the agenda. For example, when we reach item ten on the agenda, which is the hearing on the budget, the electors will be provided with an opportunity to make comments and to ask questions about the budget. If you are an elector and you desire to make comments or ask questions, you must come to the microphone, state your name, first and last, state your address, and then wait to be recognized by the chairperson. After you have been recognized by the chairperson, you may then proceed with your questions or comments. Only one elector may speak at a time. If a large number of people desire to speak, the chairperson may limit the amount of time to three minutes per person. As an elector, you also have the right to make motions relating to an agenda item at this meeting, provided that the motion is within the powers of the annual meeting. The powers of the annual meeting are limited by statute. For example, Wisconsin law does not authorize electors to amend, approve, or disapprove the proposed budget. However, the statute does authorize the electors to provide input on the budget and to vote a tax that is sufficient to operate and maintain the schools of the district. If an elector makes a motion that's beyond the powers of the annual meeting, the motion may be ruled out of order, and the chairperson may decline to hear the motion. Like comments, motions must be made at the appropriate place on the agenda. After we complete item ten on the agenda, which is the hearing on the budget, next item on the agenda, item eleven, will be adoption of the levy. At that time, the electors will have the opportunity to make a motion to vote a tax sufficient to maintain the schools in the district. If the electors at this annual meeting do not vote a tax sufficient to operate and maintain the schools, the board will be obligated by law to determine that amount before November one. Similarly, if the electors vote a tax that is greater than the revenue limits or the amount needed to operate the schools, the board may lower the tax on or before November one. Other motions that are within the powers of the annual meeting and do not address the levy would fall under Agenda Item 12B, New Business. Accordingly, such motion should be made at that point on the agenda. If you're an elector and you would like to make a motion, you're asked to come to the microphone, state your first and last name, state your address, and then wait to be recognized. After you've been recognized by the chairperson, you should then make the motion. After a motion has been made, a second is required for the motion to be heard. Once the motion has been made and seconded, it will be restated by the chairperson. At that time, the motion may be debated, or it may be put to a vote. After any debate has occurred, the chairperson will put it to the vote, only if it is within the powers of the annual meeting. If any elector believes that debate has become too lengthy, the elector may move to limit debate to a specific amount of time, or may move the previous question. By moving the previous question, an elector is moving to have a vote on the pending motion immediately and without further discussion, but a two-thirds vote is required to pass such a motion. As an elector who is voting, and you, let me back up, as an elector, you have the right to vote at this meeting as well. And while voting, all votes will be done by voice vote. Generally, all in favor will be asked to say aye, and all opposed will be asked to say no. If the vote on a motion is close or unclear, the chairperson or I will ask the electors who said aye to stand and verbally count off using numbers, beginning with the number one. After being counted, each elector will then sit down, and the same procedure will be used to count the no votes, and the chairperson will then announce the outcome of the vote. The chairperson may accept a challenge to the eligibility of any person who is attempting to vote at this annual meeting. If the person who has been challenged declares that he or she is eligible to vote and the challenge is not withdrawn, the chairperson must administer the following oath or affirmation. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you are an actual resident of the school district of Hudson and are qualified according to law to vote at this meeting? If the person refuses to take that oath or affirmation, they may not vote. If they take it, they are permitted to vote. Having reviewed the meeting procedures, the next item on the agenda, item number five, calls for the election of a chairperson to preside over the annual meeting. Once a nomination is made, I will ask if anyone is willing to second that nomination, and if so, a vote will be taken on the nomination. If there is no second, the vote will fail for lack of a second. At this time, I am now calling for nominations, using a microphone. Does any elector, including a board member, wish to voice a nomination for a chairperson?
Mr. Parliamentarian, I'd like to nominate Tom Holland as chairperson.
Brian Bell has nominated Tom Holland as the chairperson. Is there a second?
Second.
Lynn Robson has seconded the vote for Tom Holland as a chairperson. All in favor of nominating Tom Holland as the chairperson to preside at this annual meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Tom Holland has been nominated as the chairperson, and I will now turn the result over to you, Mr. Holland.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is approval of the September 13th, 2011 annual meeting minutes, and I believe that is located in your booklet, and I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes. Move to approve. Motion by Brian Bell, is her second.
I'd second it.
Second by Pat German. All in favor of approval of the 2011 minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item that we've got are Hudson School District highlights. Superintendent Mary Bowen Eggbrodt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, and welcome. A good evening to residents of the Hudson School District. Thank you for being interested in our school district highlights and certainly about the budget that supports those behaviors and achievements and accomplishments of the school district. So, Diane has us all ready at this point. We have much to be proud of in the Hudson School District. We just saw eighth grade students, Carol Dolly was our director, and certainly, those students are all learning at higher levels because of talented educators who are contributing to their learning each and every day. And those talented educators are moving forward our system of learning in the Hudson School District. All right, so, this doesn't work, and Diane's going to help me back here. Our work is grounded in the strategic vision, HSD 2025. And I want to point out that culture of excellence that it speaks about. This supports our continual improvement in the district. And I want to take some time this evening to talk about the highlights of the work in the district and the accomplishments of our students and staff over the last year. Diane? You know, when I thought about the last couple of years, the title that we used was unprecedented results. So, for two years in the past, we've had unprecedented results. Now, we're at year three. Well, the results are unprecedented once again. So, third year in a row, but it's time for a new title. So, we looked at HSD 2025 and that vision and said, what should that title be? And really, at this point, three years down the road, with unprecedented results, it's excellence in action. I'm going to talk just a little bit about one of our SMART goals, and those are learning goals that we have by our schools. This is in all of our elementary schools, and it's to have students leaving their grade levels at the end of the year reading at or above grade level. Certainly, an important goal as we look at their future success in school and beyond. And just to give you a frame of reference, in 2008, four years ago, we started at seventy-nine percent. So, with the work of our educators, both teachers and principals, and staff from the district office supporting this work, the Board of Education providing resources, we've moved that bar to ninety percent. And what that represents is three hundred more students reading at grade level. Certainly, and a very important accomplishment for our elementary staff, and congratulations to them. The next slide. Excellence in Action at the Middle School. Our Hudson Middle School was recognized two out of the last three years by the state as a middle school of excellence. And we're certainly proud of that, and I know the staff have worked diligently to raise student achievement. This, this award was based on that, and also based on the collaborative culture that existed Hudson Middle School. Now, we need to stop and just think for a minute. This middle school has the largest student population of any middle school in the state of Wisconsin. So, in addition to all the hard efforts of our staff, they're working in conditions that are not ideal, not ideal at all. Next slide. And certainly, a middle school that achieves a state-level recognition, that is also based on leadership. And we know that Principal Koch has provided very significant leadership over the course of, I think this is his eighteenth year, right, Dan? You want to stand up? Oh, come on, stand up. Let's just... Eighteenth year of leadership at Hudson Middle School, and I believe he started his fortieth year in education as well. So, certainly, enormous dedication and commitment to the field and to our youth, and certainly, our youth at Hudson have benefited by the many, many contributions over the course of his tenure in Hudson, which he's continuing, and we're very thankful about that. So, the next slide. This slide represents one of the reasons that Hudson Middle School was recognized. Hudson Middle School is raising the bar so that students are learning at higher levels, and this is one area in math. You know, we think of algebra and geometry as traditional high school courses. And because our students are learning at higher levels, we've had more and more students taking algebra courses, which we announced a few years ago, at Hudson Middle School instead of the high school. And now, we have so many of those who are taking algebra early that they're ready for geometry in the middle school. A great compliment to the staff at Hudson Middle School and to those who support their work. So, certainly, another great accomplishment of the, the middle school and of the district and our elementary teachers who have helped prepare those students as well. Next slide. All right, looking at examples of student accomplishment or student achievement and that excellence in action, and I wish I could give you all of them, and I'm only going to highlight a few. So, we have had two middle school teams over the last two years compete at the national level. In fact, the Nassau Challenge at the national level, and they've won each of those two years. In those challenges, they have used, demonstrated a high level of math, science, and technology to become champions. And those students have taken real-world problems and created solutions to those problems, and they have advocated and represented those problems to a team of scientists. And certainly, they have had to speak and write and learn and use critical thinking and problem-solving and reasoning and very, very high skills. Next slide. And we also have writers at the middle school who are being recognized, who have been state and national finalists. Again, another area very important to us in the Hudson School District. And now, excellence in action, looking at work at the high school. The district has been placed on the National College Board Advanced Placement Honor Roll for two years in a row, and that's certainly because of the work of our teachers and principals and support staff. We offer thirteen advanced placement courses, and these are very rigorous courses that end in a national exam, and students, if they pass that exam, can actually earn college credit when they go on to college. So, it helps to reduce the cost of college for those students and for their families, and certainly, it helps them to know that they can handle the rigor of college work. And if we just look at the year before last, and then last year in the spring, actually this year in the spring, we have increased, the high schools increased the number of students taking AP exams by twenty-four percent. They have also increased the number of exams taken by twenty percent, and students can't take more than one exam. And so, what does that represent? It represents fifty more passing scores on those exams. Certainly, a very important work, higher rigor demonstrated at the high school, and I know that the high school wants to even increase more students taking AP courses. And that has resulted this year, Learning Services Director Sandy Kovas just reported at our board meeting, in seventy-four of those students being named National Advanced Placement Scholars. There are actually four levels of scholarship, and we have seventy-four students who have received this level of recognition. Certainly, a wonderful honor and represents the level of work that those students are prepared to do. The next slide, well, maybe the next slide. All right, talks about our ACT accomplishments of our students. And I hope you read the article in the Hudson Star Observer that just recently reported that Hudson High School had the highest ACT average score in the area. We have sixty-five percent of the eligible students taking the ACT, and you know, we look at this goal as strong, but we also think as those students in elementary who are learning at higher levels, more students able to read at grade level and above, and more students at the middle school taking higher-level math move into our high school and eventually take the ACT, this bar will be raised. So, in the future, we are looking to, to actually move that bar for ourselves and our students. Excellence in Action for our high school forensic students who earned twenty-seven state medals. And it's just an example of learning goes on in the classroom and out of the classroom as our students have opportunities to develop in other ways and share their skills and The high school yearbook is one that we should be very proud of. I don't know if it has earned honors every year, but I could say it's almost every year, if not every year, and it's, which is, which honor is it this year? So, it's nationally recognized, it's of high quality, and we're all able to really employ that with our students from the high school and the showcase of their efforts. We have three DECA students who competed at the national level and knew, just knew this summer. Our DECA team also competed this summer and ended up being state Quiz Bowl champions. So, again, the accomplishments go on, and we'll expect more this year as well. Excellence in Action translates to our student athletes and to their coaches, under the direction of Athletic Director Stephanie DeVos, and certainly with the support of the Raider Council. Our student athletes excel both in the classroom and on the field, and we're really proud of them, not only for those that achieve, but those who participate and those who are recognized with Sportsmanship Award. Important for all of us as we look to the future in life skills. And 2012 Best Community for Music Education. You know, the arts are certainly recognized in our community and in the school district and in our strategic vision, HSD 2025. It's one, one of the fundamental content areas that we've identified. We saw evidence of that tonight, and certainly, our student musicians, whether it's vocal or whether it's instrumental, have outstanding learning experiences because of the talent of our staff. We are the largest employer in St. Croix County. So, now, I'm moving on to staff and excellence there. We have been hiring, which is good for us and certainly good for this community. This, for this year, we hired twenty-nine certified educators. That represented five new positions. We hired twenty support staff positions, representing four new positions. And excellent staff translate into those that are recognized at the state level as well. So, we have three teachers who became Herb Cole Fellowship Award winners, and they are selected because they are models of excellence. And we congratulate Cindy Mitchell from the high school, Mike Yell from the middle school, and John Ammon from the high school. Excellent staff continues as we recognize Vicki McLaughlin, who is the AP Physics and Chemistry Teacher, and one of her former students actually recommended her for this award. So, what an honor. I'm going to move on to just touch on a couple of goals, because I know you want to get on to budget issues. But as we look to this year, we are continuing to advance high school learning for the future, a certainly important, very, very important initiative for us. And that concept is really about organizing and reorganizing the high school so that we can support the success of our students, so that they're prepared for the global world that they will enter. And we want them to be both college and career-ready. So, we're looking at the high school. What do we need to do? What do we need to keep, and what do we need to change as a result? You may be aware of the advisories at the high school. It's one of the initiatives that came out of High School Learning for the Future that started in freshman year last year and is extending to the sophomore year this year, and also our initiative on project-based learning, that students developing solutions using 21st century skills to really, real-world problems that they're, they're interested in themselves. And our second goal is advancing secondary space for learning and finding a long-term solution for the overcrowded middle school that has been beyond capacity for too many years, and for the high school that has reached capacity this year. And so, in April, thanks to the voters in the Hudson School District, we passed a referendum to purchase the St. Croix Meadows. we passed a referendum to purchase the St. Croix Meadows property. We have shown evidence that that's the best site and the least costly to taxpayers to develop as a school site in the future. We are disappointed that the City Plan Commission decided to vote against rezoning that property. And rezoning that property as public is one of the contingencies of the purchase agreement. It goes before, we expect it to be scheduled before the City Council on Monday. And that's absolutely an important decision for the school district as we look at how we solve our secondary space issues. So we're hopeful that the City Council will partner with us and move this initiative forward and rezone the property. The Hudson School District, represented here by the class of 2025, when we started this strategic vision, HSD 2025, these kindergarten students were born that year. And so now they've entered kindergarten. And our challenge is to provide the resources and the support and the learning for them to meet the vision of HSD 2025. You know, we're proving excellence in action. We're operationalizing a culture of excellence for these students and all of our students and students to come. But we need the resources to do that. So the rest of our meeting this evening is really focusing on those financial resources that support the good work, that support the achievements and the accomplishments in the Hudson School District to continue that tradition of success. And so that's where we'll turn to now, looking at the funding for these accomplishments and the ones that are to come this year.
Thank you, Mary. I'll invite Brian Bell, board member, to present the district financial overview as a substitute to Dan Turnahoy, our treasurer, tonight.
Thanks, Tom. I have the pleasure to read some prepared remarks from Dan Turnahoy, our district treasurer. So I'll just, I'll read Dan's comments. I'm pleased to report that the School District of Hudson is in strong financial shape. Tim Erickson, our Director of Financial Services, will be reviewing the district's budget in detail with us after these comments. Of the forty school districts in CISA eleven, the Hudson School District's mill rate continues to be one of the lowest in the CISA. Even when you look across the state and you look at schools with valuations, school districts with evaluations of three to five billion, we are still in the lowest tier in the state. When you compare the School District of Hudson against other schools in our CISA, using total revenue comparisons per student, we rank on the bottom. When you look at the cost per student as compared to other schools in the CISA eleven, again, we are near the bottom of the list. The School District of Hudson has operated under no or very little levy increase for the last few years. And this year, we're just proposing a 2.87% increase. Keep in mind that that levy increase includes the St. Croix Meadows purchase cost. The district continues to have one of the highest, if not the highest, under levies situation in the state. This means that our district continues to operate conservatively and refrains from capturing any additional dollars that we could levy to the taxpayers. When it comes to the district's bond rating, we continue to have one of the highest bond ratings, not only in the state, but in the country, of a double A1. This determination is due to the school district's historically strong as well as currently sound financial management in addition to our strong balance sheet and our debt service. I believe this position is especially important for, as we experience growth and we have to make investments in our future. The school district's energy conservation and sustainability practice are paying off well. With increased savings in areas where we've implemented these cost savings around energy consumption since 2007 and 2008, we have achieved nearly $700,000 in savings. We'll continue to review and enhance our energy use practices in the years to come. With the new bridge being built across the river and with a new improved access to and from the Twin Cities, we anticipate this will further challenge our enrollment and growth projections as this project nears completion. This coupled with the declining unemployment rate and hopefully a rebounding economy will only mean that the Hudson and this school district will become more and more of an attractive community to live and work. I believe it's incumbent upon this community and school district to look forward and not back in planning for the future. HSD 2025 kids that Mary just showed on her slide deck now have entered the classroom, and we need to continue to plan, implement, and live up to the goals that we have set for them and many other students that enter our schools. The district has and will continue to deliver a great education for our children while being budget and fiscally conservative. We can accomplish a great deal, but only if we work together and are bold with our community and district planning and decision-making. I want to thank all the excellent teachers, administration, and district staff as they work to make this another great year of learning and achievement. I also want to thank the many Hudson School District residents for your commitment and support of the district and its goals. I encourage parents of schoolchildren, the Hudson business community, and other residents and stakeholders to become more engaged in your school district and its future with a common goal of making Hudson area vibrant and attractive community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Presenting, presenting our proposed budget for 2012-13, District Financial Service Director, Tim Erickson.
Good evening. I want to welcome you all to the annual meeting and thank you for coming out and spending your time to learn a little bit more about our budget. If you've got a small booklet and you're having trouble reading it, just slip up your hand and the folks in the back will provide you a larger booklet if you'd like one. We've got a limited number of those available. So just slip up your hand and they'll see that you get one. So with that, a few comments about the 12-13 budget. The budget is, it's a, it's a large undertaking. It requires a teamwork of many. We've got, and I really want to thank all of our staff, all of our employees. Everyone gets involved in the budget process at some level here. And it really is a, it's a huge, massive teamwork effort. So principals, directors, department heads, staff, superintendent, the board has spent a lot of time going over budget. So, and then a special thanks to Mark and Lois in my office as well. The budget process started back in roughly about December. And it will culminate with the final adoption by the board in October. So towards the end of October is when we finally wrap this process up. It's important to remember that the state will not finalize, the state doesn't finalize our aid revenue. And that's, that's one of our large numbers. They don't finalize that or the property valuations for the district until October. So the numbers are going to change from what you see tonight. We'll continue to refine the budget until a final adoption by the Board of Education in October. I think you're going to see throughout this presentation tonight that the board and the administration have taken steps in trying to minimize the effect to taxpayers, but yet still deliver a quality education to our students. If you look at the last three years and looking at levy increases in the district, in 10-11, we had a zero percent increase, no increase in the levy. In 11-12, we had a 1.96% increase in the levy. And as you heard tonight, a proposed overall levy increase of 2.87%. And that includes, again, the purchase and the debt service in 12-13 for the St. Croix Meadows purchase. If we move on to our 12-13 budget planning and just a few major points about that planning. We've seen some, some good news in our state aid estimate that was released in July by the state. And again, that's an estimate. It's going to, it will change when we get the final number in October. But that aid went up by a little over $1.5 million. Balancing that out, however, was the end of a federal jobs, education jobs program. So we also had federal aid decrease by 1.1 million. So a couple of the large numbers on that side. The preliminary general fund budget increase is 2.91% as proposed in this budget. The estimated under levy for 12-13 is $14 million. What the under levy means is it's the difference between what a school district can levy, legally can levy, what's allowable by the state, and what they actually do levy. So that means that the school, the board could levy $14 million more. But in this case, we're underleaving by $14 million. And you'll see in some of the examples and some of the information that we have that there is no other district in the state that comes close to that under levy. An overview of our aid membership is the next item. So you can see from the history there from 92-93, when we had 3,245, what we call aid membership units. And these are close to a headcount of students, but they're derived in a little bit different fashion. And then we're ending in 12-13 with 5,625. And that, that actually drives our, what we can levy and what the aid, what the general aid is from the state for students. And that 5,625 is a 2011-2012 number, but it's used to determine our 12-13 aid. Oh, sure, yeah, that should, okay, we're, yeah, we're. All right, I'm, I'm actually going from this overhead here. So I'll, I'll go back to my book here. Yeah, I'll get the page. Was it page nine I heard? Okay, page nine. Okay, then I'm going to go to, I'm going to move ahead to the state aid gap, which is revenue over time. And that is the next page, so page 10. Oops, I'm sorry, page nine, yes, thank you. Okay, so the state aid gap. What this is referring to is if you look over time, there have been some large decreases in state aid over the past few years at the state level. So school districts have received less than, less than aid than they had in prior years. But if you look in our situation, looking at from 2005, 2006 to 2008, 2009, the district received an average of $1.9 million in additional aid per year. There's been changes that have happened over, over that time span. So if you look at 2009, 2010, since 2009, 2010, the district has lost an average of $472,000 in aid per year. So if you, if you add those together, the 1.9 million in, in new dollars each year and the 472,000 in aid lost since 2009, 2010, on average, that creates a funding gap of about $2.4 million. Okay, I'll move to the next page. Now, if we look at revenues again for 11-12, you can see how our revenue breakdown is. Our biggest source is a revenue is state aid, of course, different various state aids, and then our local source, which is the tax levy. And we've got a, we've got a federal source that's fairly small. Compared to a lot of districts, that federal source is, in terms of percentage of our budget, is much smaller than many other districts. And that's due to the fact of free and reduced lunch count is the type of formula that's dependent on a lot of the state, a lot of the federal funding. As we go, go to the next page, page 11 I'm on right now. And if you look at 12-13, the proposed budget revenues, that mix changes slightly because we do go down in our federal sources, that one point, approximately $1.1 million that I mentioned previous. And we go up in our state sources. So we have a somewhat of an evening out there and actually a net gain. But state, federal sources go down to roughly about a half a percent of our, of our total revenue for the general fund. And the state aid sources are at 48.8% and the local are at 49.85% in this proposed budget. If you turn in your books to following page, page 12, or I'm going to, actually, I'm going to back up. Let's go to page 10. If we look, this gives you a brief overview of the revenues by fund and the expenditures by fund and the different types of funds that exist within the Hudson School District accounts. So the general fund accounts for most of the operations of, of our educational, overall educational expenses. The special revenue trust fund is, accounts for donations and grants that the district receives. And the special education fund holds operations district-wide for special education. And our non-referendum debt service, that is a, actually a qualified school construction bond, which is a net zero percent interest bond that was issued for the addition to our middle school. Referendum-approved debt service, that's, those are payments on bonds that have been issued for past building projects such as Rivercrest. And then we have, I'm going to skip the 45 account. That's really not applicable here. Food service is, accounts for all the operation of those student lunches. And that's primarily user fee-based. And then we have community service, which again is a user fee-based program. Community service classes and school age care operations reside there. And then we have one final fund, which is a vocational education co-op fund. And that is for our youth apprenticeship program, which is a joint effort between St. Christ Central, New Richmond, and the Hudson School District. So those are our brief overview of our funds. If you like, we can go line by line, but I probably won't do that. We can get into a little bit more detail in the general fund if we go to the next, if we go to page 12. And so you can see, as, as mentioned before, the, for the general fund, the first line there, 210, is taxes. Most of that represents the tax levy. And that is proposed at just under $24,591,450. And that represents, for the general fund, a 2.16% increase in the levy. And then we have other sources of aids, such as categorical aids, which there's some reimbursement for transportation costs and those types of things. But, but again, the, the two large ones would be the levy and the general aid. And you can see under line 620, which is state aid general, that it stands at $23,840,000. Again, an estimate from the state at this point until they make that number final for us in October. And then you can see the line 780, which is other, other federal revenue. And that was the program I was referring to earlier where we now do not have that revenue source anymore. anymore. So, that is one point, one point one million dollar decrease. If you get down into the bottom section of the report, it starts to get into expenditures and breakdowns for those expenditures by the different functions of undifferentiated curriculum, regular curriculum instruction, and vocational, et cetera. We're gonna turn the page, page thirteen. And there's some additional functional breakdowns there. And again, I don't need to do a lot of detail on it, but if you go all the way to the bottom of the total expenditures and other financing uses, you can see that total number is five, fifty million two thirty-two. And that is about two point nine one percent increase. So, it's just under, just under a rate of inflation for the past calendar year. And then the next section has information on fund balance. And then we move on to special project funds. And the special project funds are a combination of the, the grant and aid, or grants and, and donations, as well as special education funds. And then the next section is the debt service funds, and those account for all the different types of debt service that the district has incurred over the past for different building projects, again, such as Rivercrest, the middle school, and some of the other school buildings that have been built over the past several years. But again, if you look down at the bottom of that section, the expenditures and other financing uses total fifty million eighteen thousand. And that includes, again, that includes the purchase, the, the debt service on the purchase of Saint Croix Meadows. So, depending on the timing of the rezoning of that property and the timing of the closing, that levy may, may or may not be in here when the board approves the final adoption of the, of the budget in October. I'll move on to page fourteen. Capital projects fund, those are some residual dollars that are left over from a building project, and the board will determine their use in, in the near future. And again, then we've got the food service fund, that holds the operations for food service. And that's, again, primarily user-based fees there. And then the community service fund, which is all user-based fees. And then we've got our cooperative program. The district also has, at the bottom of that page, the district also has a other post-employment benefits trust fund. And that was established back in two thousand four, two thousand five, and that is used to account for other post-employment benefits. And you can see the activity from that fund for the past year. If we move on to page fifteen. Page fifteen is the summary, and this is, again, preliminary, and I hate to keep repeating myself, but it's preliminary. If you look down at that bottom row, the preliminary district valuation, valuation did drop down about, is projected to drop down about six point nine four percent. And then the total levy, so that's debt service as well as the general fund levy, a twenty-nine million one eighty-five. And so, that represents a two point eight seven percent increase over last year. And then the mill rate, you can see eight point five three, and the percentage change there, that percentage change is ten point five four percent. And that looks high, but that's because we've got a drop in values. So, if you do nothing, if everything's the same as last year, and you have a drop in property values, that number will automatically go up, and vice versa. If you, if everything's the same as the previous year, and the property values go up, the mill rate goes down. So, in this, I, I want to point out that this levy is a grow, is, is the gross levy. There are three different credits that an individual gets back on their property tax, and you'll see those on your property tax statement. The first one is the, the school levy credit, and that would be the largest credit on there. Then there's also a first dollar credit and a lottery credit, and, which are smaller credits. But those, on a sample property, we'll show some information shortly, but on a sample property, those can, can reduce taxes on a particular sample property by about eleven percent. So, it's important to remember that when we present this, present the, the levy at the annual meeting, it is presented on gross levy, but not the net levy. So, there are other credits on there that will reduce that for the individual. Down below in that section, you can see the breakdown of the projected or estimated valuations for each of the entities that lies within the Hudson School District. And then I'm going to move on to page sixteen. And page sixteen is the proposed resolution for tonight, and to set the tax levy for twelve thirteen. And again, that total amount is twenty-nine million one eighty-eight, one seventy-five. Twenty-four million five eighty-seven, four fifty of that is for the general fund, and four million six hundred seven twenty-five is for the debt service fund. So, that is the, that is the resolution on the proposal for tonight. And if you go to page eighteen, we present some statewide data. And this first data point looks at two thousand ten-eleven, which is the latest information that's available, available from the Department of Public Instruction. And it looks at total revenue per member that is raised, and per member meaning per student. And so, this looks at K-12 districts, regular K-12 districts across the state, and there are three hundred sixty-seven regular K-12 districts. And if you look at this chart, Hudson total revenue raised per student is ten thousand eight seventy-one in ten-eleven. And out of those three hundred and sixty-seven districts, Hudson is number three sixty-seven. So, you can see it is the lowest of all districts in the state for ten-eleven. If you look at the K-12 average, the K-12 average down at the very bottom of the page is thirteen thousand four eleven. And we'll move on to the next point. If you compare, as you heard, the comments as written by Dan Chernow and presented by Brian Bell tonight, Dan looked at some of the data in the CISA, number, CISA eleven region, which are our area districts. And so, if we again look at ten-eleven data, total revenue per member, per student, and Hudson's total revenue is the last, is the lowest. So, thirty-nine out of thirty-nine regional districts, ten thousand eight seventy-one. The CISA average is thirteen thousand three seventy-eight. And then if we look on the other side of that, so we looked at the revenue, if you look on the other side of that, so looking at two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, total educational cost per student, and again, looking at the K-12 districts, there are three hundred sixty-seven of those districts, and Hudson's rank is three hundred sixty-second. So, the total educational cost in Hudson, as reported by the state, is ten thousand four nineteen. And you're looking at a K-12, the statewide average of twelve thousand eight sixteen. And moving on to the next page, we have some of the same information, but looking at the CISA region, region eleven, again, looking at total educational cost. So, in that case, if you sort it by the region, Hudson is second to the bottom. And that average, CISA, is twelve thousand four ninety-nine, and Hudson is ten thousand four nineteen. Now, page twenty-two, you can see in eleven twelve, this is a, so this is, this past year, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, tax levy, mill rate, and this was compiled by CISA eleven, so looking again at those thirty-nine regional districts. And Hudson's mill rate was thirty-fifth lowest out of thirty-nine districts. And then, we'll go to page twenty-three. And we talked a little bit about the under levy tonight, and this, this is a chart that shows a list of districts that have under levied. And again, the under levy is the difference between the amount of levy allowable by state law for a district and what the actual amount levied by that district was. So, in this particular case, the, in this particular case, there are four hundred twenty-five districts total. And that includes, not to confuse the issue, but that includes other than K-12 districts. There are different types of districts recognized by the state, but there are four hundred twenty-five of those districts. And in this case, one hundred eight of those districts under levied. Some on the list show up as a very, very small under levy, but nonetheless, if they under levy, they show up on the list. But you can see those that are the first thirty-four districts. And if you look at Hudson, Hudson under levy last year, twelve million two hundred seventy thousand dollars. That under levy put district, put the Hudson School District at the top of the list in the state. You can see the second one is Madison Metropolitan. Madison's about four times larger in the size, in terms of students than Hudson, and the under levy ten million three eleven. So, you can see that even though there are much larger districts, the under levy amount by the Hudson School District was the most. In fact, if you look at that bottom, total under levy by all districts, sixty-one million four eighty-three, Hudson under, under levy makes up twenty percent of that total. And again, I won't labor the point much, but on page twenty-four, we could even look at a three-year history of, of total under levies. And taking the last three years of under levy and adding those under levies together, Hudson makes up fifteen percent of the total three-year levy, so twenty-nine million dollars. And I think when you, when you look at those things coupled with the success of our students as Mary had gone through, you can really tell you're gonna bang for the buck here. If we look on page twenty-five, we've got a property tax history on an actual residential property in the school district. And this gives a fifteen-year history on increases. So, it, it looks at increases in total property tax, and then it breaks apart the school portion of the property tax. It also looks at the fair market value and what's happened over time to this particular homestead. Total property taxes amounted to one thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollar increase. The portion of school district tax was three forty-four, and the value of the home went up about sixty-nine thousand. So, if you look in terms and converting that to in terms of average percentage increase per year, total property taxes on this particular home went up four point four eight percent, and the school district tax on that particular home went up two point five three percent, and the value of the home went up four point zero five percent. And I'll move on to the next page, page twenty-six. This is a summary balance sheet of the district at a snapshot date, June thirtieth, and it shows the different assets there, cash and investments and receivables, and the liabilities, and then also the fund balance. So, gives you a snapshot in time. And then the following page, page twenty-seven, goes through the different bond issues that the district has outstanding. And if you go down to about the, about the middle of the page, we also, as, as I've mentioned throughout the report, we include the Saint Croix Meadows debt service estimate here. So, upon rezoning and starting to move towards a closing on that property, then bonds would be issued. And the estimated interest that would be paid on those bonds for the first year is, is estimated there again. So, that gives you a brief overview. And then, the rest of the, the last few pages are dedicated to definition of terms. So, if you really like to read this, or you have insomnia at night, you can go back and read the glossary, but I, I won't go into detail on that. So, that is the overview.
Thank you, Tim. We'll move next to the hearing on the budget. This is the opportunity for the public to speak regarding this item, regarding the budget. And I'll invite anyone who would like to speak to come forward to any one of the two mics in front and begin by giving us your name and place of residence. Anybody like to speak? I believe there's no one here, I guess, tonight, who'd like to speak to this. I will move, oh, sorry.
Alfred Schultz, five hundred, Kerry's Lane, Hudson. I have a question. At various board meetings, you talked about positions of people here that are employed by you that are not part of the tax roll, are not paid by the tax roll. I know Tracy's position was one, and you mentioned some others. I'm just curious where they come out of on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfred. We'll let Tim respond to that.
They, I guess we'll, we'll take the example of that particular position that was mentioned. That is paid through the community services fund, and that fund is supported by user fees.
Anybody else? We'll forego the formalities on the name, I think, this time, since we got you.
So, therefore, if they're coming out of the user fees, wouldn't it be true to say that our taxes would be lower if that position wasn't there? You're taking money out of user fees, so kind, it's kind of a misnomer, I think, to say they are not, these people are not taxed or paid for by our taxes, because to me, if you didn't have the expense, then you'd have a little excess in these user fees that would help lower my taxes. Am I correct?
I'll just, I'll, I'll, again, address that particular position. Those, those fees that I'm talking, the user fees that I'm talking about are fees for school age care, fees for community education courses, fees to help operate and coordinate the function of our facilities for, for community use. So, you know, they're not, again, not a direct, not a direct, not a tax.
Tim? And those fees don't come out of the levy that we're talking about or voting on this evening?
That's correct. We don't levy anything for the community service fund.
If I understand this correctly, the fees that are generated are directly related to a direct cost related to those, those fees. So, we, we wouldn't have the ability to generate those, those fees just on their own.
A community service covers a lot of different activities. So, again, but a community service as is, you know, if I take a class in community service, I pay a fee for that. If I have my child in school age care, I pay the fee for that. So, we're looking at all the different fees.
Mr. Chair? Tim, don't some districts levy for community service?
Yeah, they, absolutely. There are districts that, in our CISA region and across the state, that do levy, levy for community service. Our district has not, I- Our district has not, since I've been here, we've never levied for community service.
Sharon, yeah, yeah. Can somebody help? Oh, can you get over there? Okay. We can bring it to you, it might be better. Thanks, Meg.
Thank you very much.
Sharon, just give us your name and address.
Yes, I will. My name's Sharon Norton Baumann. I live in Hudson at 1150 Front Street South, and I've just got two or three things that I don't know about that I'd like to ask you about. First off, I'd like to just know, with the increase in the levy, how many dollars will that cost an owner of a $200,000 house? I'm not objecting to it, I'm just asking the question.
You know, that's, that's one where I wish I could answer that with a lot more certainty, but one, one of the things that we have is that we don't, we don't have the credits included in here, and we don't, we don't have that information. In fact, that information comes after the, after school districts pass their budget. But there's, this, so these taxes, again, are a net, and if you, or, I'm sorry, they're gross, and so there, there would be those ta, those offsets of those three different levy credits that would lower that tax. But to try and calculate that is a little bit difficult. We also have different things, if we could, we could actually go to a, we have an example. Diane, if you could go back to that. So we, if we talk about this example, talks a little bit in, you know, basic terms about assessed values and what happens when the assessed values go up, go down, et cetera. But if, if we assume in this case that there are only two properties in this particular school district, and each resident owns 50%, 50% of the total property value, and they're both assessed at the same amount, if you go to the next line, Diane, just hit enter, and we assume that the district levy is $2,000, then each of those homes picks up 50%, so, or $1,000 per residence. And that same thing happens whether those assessed values, if they move up and down the same, relatively the same, which in actuality doesn't necessarily happen, but you would see each of those, if they move up and down the same, they're still going to pick up, assuming the levy stays the same, they're still going to pick up that same 50%, so $1,000 per residence. We also have something that, that occurs in that we call the tax spread, and if I If I go back to page 15 in your book, and you go down to that bottom section, so it talks about estimated valuation levy by, by taxing district. And so we've got the five entities, the city, and the townships, and the village that fall within the school district. Of course, St. Joe and the Town of Troy don't, aren't all within the district, but if you look at the valuation, we have to do what's called, take the levy, and we have to spread the levy, and this is all according to state statute. But, for example, if you look at the Town of Hudson and Town of St. Joe that are going down, and here's why it gets very difficult to estimate the increase or decrease, is that the Town of St. Joe and the Town of Hudson are dropping double digits. If you look at the Town of Troy, they're dropping by, they're almost staying level, they're at a .18% in decrease. So because of that, there are going to be variations in each of those taxing entities, and I can tell you from experience that, you know, the Town of Troy, in this case, will pick up a larger share of the levy when it gets distributed. The Town of St. Joe will pick up a lesser share, and that's, but again, that's, that's the way that we're required to spread those taxes, and that's why it gets so difficult to peg a number to those tax increases.
Well, thank you for your attempt, and I know that it's complicated. I have a couple other questions. I noticed that the fund balances increased $2 million. Do you have a board policy on, at what percentage of your budget you do fund your fund balance?
Yeah, I'll take that one as well. Yeah, there is, there's a board policy, and that policy is 20, a fund balance of 25% to 30% of expenditures. In this case, it will, we are above that, and then the board also has discretion to reserve additional fund balance if needed, so that would be part of another discussion before finalizing the budget.
Okay, so perhaps before finalizing the budget, the fund balance amount would be not what it is presented tonight?
That, that's right. That could change.
That could change. Okay, thank you. One other question, and then I'm done. I'd like to know if you have a dollar amount that your staff has contributed to their state pension retirement fund for this budget?
I have a dollar amount. They're, they're contributing, what they're contributing right now is, with the, with the exception of very few that are under contract, they're contributing one half of their amount.
I understand that. Do you have a dollar amount? Because my understanding is that prior to what we all know as Act 10, the school district itself funded the total pension contributions to the state retirement fund. So within this new budget, this is the first full year that Act 10 will have been in place for the full annual year of your operation, so my question is, how much is the staff contributing to the pension fund thereby creating some additional expenditure money or monies that the school district can spend in other ways? So I'd just like to know what that number is, because it makes a big difference in this budget.
Yes, it does, and our, actually, school district's first year was last year. We've...
No, I understand that, but this is the first full year.
Well, for us, we did, yeah, we did have a full year already.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're on a fiscal year. I apologize for my ignorance on that.
Okay, not a problem.
Do you have a number?
Do I have a number? What I can tell you is it would be about half of what our share, what the employer share is, which is 1.49 million.
And so the half would be how much?
So that would be the half that the employees are contributing.
They are contributing, excuse me, the employees are, are contributing 1.4 million toward their retirement fund in this budget.
That's, what I, what I, what I'm basing this off of, I don't have the exact number that the employees are contributing, but I have the half that the employer, the school district is contributing. So, that's right. So that's what I'm saying, is that would be about the same, roughly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, sure.
Tim, would there be some contractual exceptions to that, perhaps, that would...
Yes, as I mentioned before, there are some, there are a few contractual exceptions to that. As those contracts expire, then those folks will, will pay under the, under the law, as it's written.
Tim, can you tell me again? I, I didn't catch the percentage that the fund balance is of the total budget.
The fund balance is...
Or what's allowed, what the school board has decided to allow?
The, the policy is 25% to 30%, and, and then again, anything beyond that would be a board action, if they reserved anything beyond that.
So it's not a set figure? It's a range?
It's, it's a range, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? You might need to reposition the, the mic for you. Place of residence, name, thanks.
I'm Lars Stavla, 11 Brywood Court, up the road by the cemetery. My question is, a couple of them. Number one, we get these people retired, and in the news, there's a lot of information about governments being underfunded for retirement. Now, is there a possibility that the general fund's going to be hit with unfunded liability?
That's a, as far as the unfunded liabilities that you're referring to...
The pensions.
Right. The, what we're looking at is those other post-employment benefits. Right now, the district is pay, is on a pay-as-you-go system. If we look at, there isn't, there isn't anything at, at this point in place beyond 2016 for, for employees.
And then the second question is, the way you got the budget set up, and you got some services that are paid for, like food service, and you don't break that out separately as a profit and loss number. Loss is picked up out of the general fund?
Yeah, it, in normal circumstances, the, any deficit in food service would be absorbed by the general fund, but we haven't, we've got a history of not having to do that in Hudson, and there is, you're right, there is, there is a deficit in that fund right now, and that's allowed because we have sufficient reserves in that fund, so we're, we have a project that will be done to increase efficiency.
So you're basically budgeting that as a separate entity?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
You're not reporting it...
Oh, pardon me?
You're not reporting it that way in here.
Yeah, it, it's actually separated out as a separate fund, so if you look on, if you go to page 13, oh, I'm sorry.
Food services on 14.
Food services on page 14, yes. So that's a, that says Fund 50, so that's a, that's a separate fund. It's a standalone fund for food service.
Okay, so, the balance is that way. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else? Okay, I will move then to entertaining a motion to adopt the levy as presented. Probably use the language, it's found on page 16.
I have a question. The adoption of the levy needs to come from the electors? The motion to adopt the levy comes from the electors?
Including us.
Okay, so then, does the board vote on this also, like we did at the, at the board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President? I have to make a motion. Be resolved the tax in a total amount of $29,188,175, $24,587,450 general fund, $4,600,725 debt service fund B, and it's hereby levied against taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
There is a motion before, is there a second?
I see that.
Second by Pat, okay. Motion and a second. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of accepting the motion to adopt the levy as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Okay. All right, so, we'll do it this way. We'll ask everybody, again, this time, those that are in favor of the motion as presented, to stand up, and then we'll ask after that, to those that are opposed, to stand up and do a count. So all in favor of accepting the motion as presented, please stand. I'm sorry. All right, signify by, in another manner, thank you. Okay, we're going to do a count off by one, starting over here with Brian.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Seven.
Eight.
Nine.
10.
11.
12.
13.
14.
15.
16.
17.
18.
19.
20.
31.
32.
33.
34.
35.
36.
37.
39.
40.
41.
42.
43.
44.
45.
100.
102.
103.
104.
105.
106.
107.
109.
111.
113.
120.
121.
123.
125.
126.
131. 132.
131.
132.
134.
136.
137.
139.
141.
142.
151.
151.
153.
154.
155.
156.
157.
158.
159.
161.
170.
171.
173.
174.
176.
178.
180.
181.
183.
185.
187.
190.
191.
193.
195.
197.
199.
100. 101. 102. 103. 104. 105. 106. 107. 108. 109. 110. 111. 112. 113. 114. 115. 116. 117. 118. 119. 120.
121. 122. 123. 124. 125. 126. 127. 128. 129. 130. 131. 132. 133. 134. 135. 136. 137. 138. 139. 140. 141. 142. 143. 144. 145. 146. 147. 148. 149. 150. 151. 152. 153. 154. 155. 156. 157. 158. 159. 160. 161.